Ready with the recording? Okay. It is now 7:00 PM and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the Regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, August 5th, 2024. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising. Ms. Demming. Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Fosdick.
Here.
And Ms. Gents.
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Gents, will you please lead us in the touch of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have two board salutes. Ms. Demming? Oh, let's do Ms. Gents.
Kiwanis Key Club Scholarship Awards. The board salutes four District 204 graduates who received Key Club Scholarship Awards from the Kiwanis Club of Naperville. The recipients are Shrina Bijum and Sheil Parek from Matia Valley, and Sangit Mohan and Allison Shirinberg from Wabonzi Valley. The scholarships were funded through generous donations from the Kiwanis Club of Naperville. The scholarship recipients were recognized for their volunteer leadership and community service as members of the Kiwanis Key Club, as well as their academic achievements. Congratulations to all involved.
All right, Ms. Demming.
We are so pleased to share that Warriors win at the International Chess Festival in Romania. The board salutes the Wabonzi Valley chess team for its first-place win at the International Chess Festival in Romania. Seven countries participated, and Wabonzi Valley placed first overall, as well as in the high school session. Congratulations. We're excited to have the Wabonzi Valley chess team. Will you please join us right up here? Thank you guys again for joining us.
Yeah, one more final applause for all of the great accomplishments. It is now time for public comment, and 60 minutes is allowed for public comment. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents, so we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. Tonight, we have five speakers. The first one is Jamie Scheffler.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Scheffler, and I am a resident of Naperville, IPSD, and have three children in the district. We love this school, and I want to share why I believe why a referendum is crucial for our community and why I support a measure to be added to the ballot. Our family has relocated across the country numerous times due to corporate moves. However, when we chose to settle in Naperville, it was a deliberate decision. We could have selected to live anywhere in the Chicago metropolitan area. The exceptional quality of education in IPSD and the strength of our community were crucial factors in our choice to become part of this vibrant area and enroll our children in its schools. Our commitment to 204 was so strong that we decided to put an end to our corporate relocations and establish our roots here, just as many other families have. District 204 has a strong reputation to maintain, and I know I speak on behalf of others who feel the same. The bond and tax proposal aims to address the critical and very high priority needs within our school district. The district has outlined the needs for building improvements, safety, security, operational upgrades, as well as essential repairs to facilities, roofing, plumbing, operational mechanical systems. These are not just needed for improvement, but they are needed for maintenance issues, and they are vital to ensuring our children learn in a safe, comfortable, and modern environment. Safety improvements are crucial, especially given the ongoing safety concerns in our country. District 204 spends substantially less per student compared to many other districts, yet it continues to rank among top in the state. This reflects the effectiveness of our educators, the efficiency of our district, and the ongoing commitment to financial stewardship. We should be proud of this, but also recognize that continued investment is necessary to not only maintain, but to enhance these standards. Investing in our schools means investing in our community's future, a strong, well-funded school district, both for those with students and children in the district and those without. It enhances your property values, it attracts new residents, and fosters a thriving local economy, ultimately contributing to a higher quality of life for all. Measures like the ones being addressed today will be a vital tool for maintaining and improving our district. If we cease to invest, we risk falling into disrepair, which could infect not only our children's education, but the future growth and strength of our entire community, which is the reason why so many of us are here. Let's continue to support our schools and invest in the future of our district. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Andrew Pass.
Good afternoon. I'm Andrew Pass, and I drove in from Detroit today to come to the school board meeting. I grew up in Displanes, but then I did my doctoral work at Michigan State and stayed in Michigan. But I'm the founder of an educational content development company. We partner with local school districts to develop curriculum that is specific for their community, specific for their area. Like Chicago developed its own curriculum, we make it possible for school districts that are not huge to develop their own. Now, why is this important? Well, I've got to tell you, I've been here for all of about 15 minutes, and your school district is amazing. And the reason why I say that is because there is so much positive energy, and you guys are special. And the fact is, your teachers and administrators coming together to develop professional curriculum is far better than if you purchase national curriculum or something from a publisher who doesn't look at local communities. We don't know what jobs our current students are going to have available to them in even five years, let alone 10, 15, their entire career. And therefore, we can't only be worried about specific content, though that's important, but we also have to be teaching critical thinking skills, creativity, collaboration. And we can develop that content to support your students. And even if it's not us developing that content, that content is highly important, creating students for the 21st century who are actually going to be alive in the 22nd century. And therefore, it's a pleasure to be here, and I always like walking into districts that have such positive morale. So I know that the administration, and the teachers, and the board recognize the urgency of what they're doing and are meeting it. So it's a pleasure to be here, and it's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Amato.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Michael Amato, and I'm an Equal Valley graduate of the class of 2023. And I come here today as a student, speaking in support of continuing the resolution to keep funding our schools. I'm currently a rising sophomore at the University of Southern California, studying public policy and specific education that I learned in District 204 that brings me here today. Schools are the pillars of our community. I understand that all parents want to cut corners where they can when it comes to budgets. We don't want high taxes in our community, but our students are not the place to cut. We cannot continue to underfund our schools. Our public school district is exactly what we need to continue funding our education. I grew up in District 204. I went from kindergarten in Graham Elementary School all the way through Equal Valley, and I have seen the amazing community that surrounds us and the amazing students that we continue to raise. And it goes beyond Equal. When I was part of the Equal Valley community, I was on the speech team and part of youth and government. Both of these collaborated with Wabonzi Valley and Matia as well. Our students are exactly what we need to invest in our future. I think that it's exactly why we need to continue funding our schools. As a public policy major, part of my curriculum is continuing to go into schools in Los Angeles and view their experiences as well. I had the opportunity to volunteer in elementary school this semester and see what it's like in Los Angeles, in those underfunded schools. And to them, their treat, if they got an answer right, was a pencil. They didn't even have the supplies or the money at home to have pencils for their education. I'm not saying that if we don't fund this resolution that we're not going to have pencils for our students, but I've seen firsthand what an underfunded school looks like, and we cannot be there. When I, even in my time in the district, we've gone so far in what we're able to fund. In elementary school, we had a computer lab. Students didn't even have laptops, but by the time I reached my senior year, every student had a laptop in front of them and was able to connect, view online resources, and use Google Classroom. We've gone so far in just my 13 years in the district, and we can continue to do so. The resolution happened for 20 years, and that's how we continue our funding. We saw the changes in the 13 years I was in the district. We can continue this far into the future. I understand that we have a stewardship to our students. The school board has a stewardship to continue funding our schools as possible. So please, support this resolution, fund schools, and continue to produce productive students like me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Razak.
Good evening, board members. My name is Michael Razak. I do live in the district. I have had two children in the district. They're now 38 and 40 and very successful because of the district. And I think you all know, I served on the board from 2013 to 2021. But tonight, you're going to be faced with one of the most important decisions of your entire board tenure, when you cast your vote whether to adopt a referendum resolution for our community's consideration on November 5th. As you contemplate your vote, I am asking that you consider the oath of office that you took at the very first meeting. That oath dictates that you must do two things. You must serve as education's key advocate on behalf of its students and community schools, but it's coupled with respecting taxpayers' interests by serving as faithful protector of our school district's assets. So at first glance, and you know, sometimes these two interests compete. I know that as a former board member, difficult decisions had to be made, how to spend our resources in a fiscally responsible manner. Historically and currently, our district has been and is faced with a state funding system that is property-tax dependent, and it has not adequately funded our district. Generally, our funding from the state is at 80% to 85% adequacy weight. I know, at the time, I was envious of our neighbor, maybe you still are, that they can function at over 100% adequacy weight. And there were a few years when the check from the state came late, or it didn't come at all. Yet despite some of these roadblocks, District 204 was and continues to be a high-performing school district. This is in large part to visionary leadership and dedicated staff of teachers, and to your point, we are a destination district. So whether it's our niche ratings, high academic scores, special education programs, music and art programs, or the number of classes and activities available to our students, when people move to the Chicago metropolitan area, they seek out District 204 as a global, global education destination. Yet, because we have always placed a premium on our children, our buildings only received priority upkeep and repair. In my own reflection, I think you're lucky tonight. I actually feel you can meet both of your oaths.
I'm so, so sorry, Mr. Razak, but your time is up.
Okay. So, in conclusion, you can meet both of your oaths interest by voting yes, placing this question on the ballot. Thank you.
Last speaker is Aleisha Smith.
Hello. My name is Aleisha Smith. I'm a former student of 204 Gregory at Wabonzi. I'm a former teacher at Kendall in Georgetown. I reside in the district, Gambert's Myfeeder School, where my niece and nephews go to school. I would like a response to this public comment. I know that usually, you know, you don't do that with me, but I would like it to be from the school board, as opposed to Dr. Tally or Mr. Johnson. My question is, is how many more fatalities do there need to be? We had yet another fatality on Eola Row. That makes within the last year and a half, four fatalities within a mile of both Wabonzi and Fisher. One, a recent Wabonzi grad, one, a 204 teacher, one, a Wabonzi student, and now a parent whose kids are at Wabonzi and Fisher. I would just like to know what it would take for you all to realize that it is not a safe route to have our students walking alongside and crossing Eola and Agnen. I know that you have this safety referendum. In the presentation that I went to, there's nothing in the referendum about providing busing for our students, who have had their busing taken away or who have to use dangerous routes to school. So there's been a priority placed on building safety, but not on our students getting to school and back safely, which is more dangerous than any danger they could face in the building. Also, you took the time to assess the needs at each and every school, but yet you still have not done the IDOT serious safety hazard readings for all the schools in the district. And Wabonzi's serious safety hazard raising has not been done, and Fisher's has not been done. Yet there have been four fatalities along those routes, or along those roads, that we have routes to schools for our students. It's also inequitable. You have students that are having to cross Agnen and Eola or walk alongside them, yet there are other students who are less than 1.5 miles from their school, and they do not have to. So I would just like to know what it will take for you all to realize that it is not safe for our kids to be walking alongside Eola and Agnen and crossing them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we move to our consent agenda items. I need a motion for the approval of consent agenda items D through J. Oh, sorry. I was in a hurry to get to the consent agenda. Okay. We are now going to move to the superintendent report. Dr. Tally.
Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education and the Indian Prairie community, I have to start my comments with sad news, with the passing of one of our teachers, Mr. Mike Schu. Mr. Schu passed away on Saturday morning. He was a teacher at Owen. However, he had also taught at Young, Longwood, and Patterson in his 29 years in the district. Mike's wife, Lori, is an SSC at McCarty. They have three children. We send our condolences to the family, and may they know what a difference Mike had in our district with the students he taught and the staff with whom he worked. I ask that we take a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Mike Schu.
Thank you. Our summer is flying by, however, we are excited by the start of this new school year. As you drive by our schools, you will see construction work happening in many of our buildings. I've mentioned before that multiple construction projects are in place in that schools, with many of them almost completed or will be completed in time for the start of the school year. Last week, I was at Skullin and saw that they were working on the front parking lot. That work should be completed this week. I was also at McCarty and saw their new playground. I also saw the new flooring at May Watts last week. I am sure students will be pleased and excited about the changes when they go into the schools. I remind families to register their children if they have not done so. Registered children, especially at the elementary level, have an impact on staffing. Teachers are being moved across schools now based upon enrollments. Therefore, it's very important to get your students registered now and not later. Thursday, August 22nd is opening day of school. Are you ready? The district will be ready to receive your students and start instruction on that first day. This year, all kindergarten students are to start on the first day and not the second day of school. This change ensures that our kindergarten students will have a full year of instruction similar to their peers in other school districts. This change also supports families by having all of their children start on the same day. So far, we have hired approximately 110 new teachers for this school year. Of those teachers, 21 of them, or 19%, are teachers who attended our schools as students. We are excited about all of our teachers, but we have extra excitement for when we're able to bring back our own students as teachers. It shows their commitment to moving, sharing with what they learned as students to the students they have now as teachers. We continue to seek out those who can work as teaching assistants for the district. We know that there is a national shortage of those who are filling the teaching assistant positions. Teaching assistants work directly with students and support them in their endeavors. If you have the time, or you know someone who does, please contact your child's school or our human resources office. Flexible hours are available for people by working part-time or full-time. Not having these positions filled impacts our students and our teachers and the rest of the staff who must cover for the vacancies. Finally, I'm very happy that Aramark and its employees of SEIU members who spoke at our last meeting have agreed on a contract. I'll now turn the meeting back over to Ms. Demming.
Thank you. Now, we will move to the consent agenda items, and I need a motion for consent agenda items D through J.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items D through J as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Mr. Rising. Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
And Ms. Jane.
Yes.
The motion passes. Now, we will move to our board policies for first reading. I need a motion to approve board policies for first reading as presented. I move that the board approve board policies for first reading as presented.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Mr. Rising. Ms. Demming.
Aye.
And Ms. Donahue.
Yes. The motion passes. All right, now, on to our big topic of the night, referendum. I need a motion to approve the referendum resolution, Safer, Stronger 204, as presented.
I move.
Do I read the resolution?
Ms. Jane will read the referendum.
Okay. Please bear with me, this one's long.
It's a long.
It's a long one.
Three pages, so.
Resolution. Providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing school-building bonds to the voters of Community Unit School District Number 204, DuPage and Will Counties, Illinois, at the general election to be held on the 5th day of November 2024. Whereas the Board of Education, otherwise known as the School Board, of Community Unit School District Number 204, DuPage and Will Counties, Illinois, otherwise called the district, has considered the existing school facilities and the improvements and extensions necessary to be made thereto in order that the same will adequately serve the educational needs of the district. And whereas the School Board does hereby find and determine that it is necessary and in the best interests of the district and the School Board be authorized to alter, repair, and equip existing school buildings, including constructing security improvements, including installing secure entryways, access controls and intrusion detection, replacing roofing, mechanical, plumbing, and HVAC systems, updating classrooms, science labs, and libraries, media centers, and enhancing energy efficiency, otherwise called the project, at an estimated cost of $420 million. And whereas the School Board does hereby find and determine that the project is needed to provide a quality educational program, and whereas there are insufficient funds on hand and available to pay the costs of the project, and whereas before the School Board can provide the project and borrow money and issue bonds for such purpose, a proposition, therefore, otherwise known the proposition, must be submitted to the voters of the district and be approved by a majority of the voters of the district voting on such proposition at an election to be held in and for the district. And whereas it is deemed advisable, necessary, and in the best interests of the district, that the proposition be submitted to the voters of the district at an election to be held and conducted in accordance with the general education law. Now, therefore, be it and it is hereby resolved by the Board of Education of Community Unit School District Number 204, DuPage and Will Counties, Illinois, as follows. Section 1. Incorporation of preamble. The School Board hereby finds that all of the recitals contained in the preamble to the resolution are full, true, and correct, and does incorporate them into the resolution by this reference. Section 2. Need for project. It is necessary and in the best interests of the district that the School Board be approved. authorized to provide the project, and that it is necessary and in the best interests of the district that money be borrowed and in evidence thereof, bonds of the district be issued, therefore, to the amount of $420 million. Section 3, submission to voters. The proposition shall be submitted to the voters of the district in accordance with the general election law at the general election to be held on Tuesday, the 5th of November 2024, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. on said day, otherwise known as election. Section 4, voting precincts and polling places. The election shall be held in the voting precincts and at the polling places established by the county boards of the counties of DuPage and Will, Illinois, for voters of the district at the election. Section 5, election notice. The county clerks of the counties shall each give notice of the election, including the Spanish translation thereof, as deemed by each county clerk, to be required by law in accordance with the general election law by: I, publishing the notice once, not more than 60 nor less than 10 days prior to the date of the election in a local community newspaper having general circulation in the district; and II, posting a copy of the notice at least 10 days before the date of the election at their respective principal office. Section 6, local notice. The Secretary of the School Board shall post a copy of the notice at the principal office of the district. Section 7, newspaper of general circulation. It is hereby found and determined that the Naperville Sun is a local community newspaper having general circulation in the district as required by Section 12-5 of the Election Code of the State of Illinois, as amended. Section 8, notice, form of notice. The notice shall appear over the name or title of the respective county clerk and shall be substantially in the following form. Notice is hereby given that at the general election to be held on Tuesday, the 5th of November 2024, the following proposition will be submitted to the voters of Indian Prairie Community Unit School District Number 204, DuPage and Will Counties, Illinois. Shall this Board of Education of Indian Prairie Community Unit School District Number 204, DuPage and Will Counties, Illinois, alter, repair, and equip existing school buildings, including constructing security improvements, including installing secure entryways, access controls, and intrusion detection, replacing roofing, mechanical, plumbing, and HVAC systems, updating classrooms, science labs, and libraries, and media centers, enhancing energy efficiency, and issue bonds of said school district to the amount of $420 million for the purpose of paying the costs thereof.
Thank you for reading that, that was a lot. I do need a motion and a second for this resolution.
Madam President, I make a motion for acceptance of this resolution.
Second.
Mr. Shipley.
All right. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Tonight, administration recommends the Board of Education approve a referendum resolution which would place a $420 million bond referendum on the November 2024 general election ballot. The referendum will fund the most significant improvements identified in the district's master facility plan, keep operating funding directed towards the classroom, and it will do this while not increasing the bond and interest tax rate. Administration has spent many months evaluating this proposal and considered several other options. Tonight, I would like to briefly review the ballot language, summarize the key improvements to be funded, overview the process which has led to this recommendation, and discuss the next steps if the Board approves this recommendation. The proposed ballot language is shown here. This is the same language just read by Board Member Jane. This language has been reviewed and approved by our bond council and complies with all applicable requirements as outlined in state statute. As a bond resolution, all funding would be restricted for building improvements. The key improvement areas are listed here, and as you can see, there's a focus on safety and security improvements, reinvestment in building infrastructure, gaining operational efficiencies, and other improvements. The resolution lists the maximum amount of borrowing authorized, which we are recommending this evening as an amount of $420 million. We estimate this bond amount corresponds to an annual debt service payment of approximately $25.5 million and a debt service tax levy of .37 cents. These are the current amounts being paid on bonds maturing in 2026. In other words, this referendum, if approved, would simply replace the current bond and interest levy and not result in a tax rate increase. Administration has spent many months considering how to fund the needed improvements identified in the master facility plan and to do this without impacting the classroom. Administration engaged a team of architects, engineers, and safety and security professionals to review every building in the district. This work culminated in the development of a master facility plan, which was adopted by the Board in December of 2023. We began this work knowing that our buildings had challenges based on their age and the limited amount of reinvestment the district has made since many of the facilities were built. Half of Indian Prairie's buildings now average over 35 years old. Like a house or any other property, our schools are at an age where they need significant reinvestment. The replacement cost for all the district's facilities is over $3 billion. Tonight's recommendation is to invest a small percentage of this amount to ensure these facilities continue to serve our community for many years to come. As shown here, Indian Prairie receives significantly less per student than our seven other comparable districts and less than the state average. For example, Indian Prairie spends $3,300 less per student than Naperville 203. With over 25,000 students, this equates to Indian Prairie having over $75 million less in resources each year than Naperville 203. Also shown here is the funding adequacy percentage for our comparable districts, where Indian Prairie is once again the lowest. Simply put, administration does not believe we can fund necessary building improvements without negatively impacting the educational programming based on the current operational Our master facility plan identified five priority areas for the district: safety and security, infrastructure, learning environments, a lack of parity across the district, and operational inefficiencies. Funding from this referendum would address four of these areas. Safety and security improvements are our number-one priority, and work would start during the summer of 2025. If the referendum is successful, we would have eight years to spend the funds and expect significant improvements each year to many district facilities. All district facilities will see safety and security needs addressed, and we believe this referendum will improve all district facilities. During the spring, administration engaged in significant community outreach to obtain feedback on our funding proposal. This included developing a citizens' task force, three community mailers, a community-wide survey, over 40 informational presentations, digital advertisements, and the launching of our Safer, Stronger 204 website. This outreach was on top of several years of work around the strategic priorities of our district, including our enrollment and boundary work, strategic plan, equity plan, and the master facility plan. All these initiatives also included significant community discussion and participation. The result of our community engagement were presented in more detail during the June 10th Board of Education meeting. In general, the community supported significant portions of the proposal. However, we did hear concerns about the overall tax burden and potential length of any new tax. This referendum proposal addresses these concerns by keeping the current tax rate and extends the tax rate only as long as necessary to repay the bonds. If the Board approves the resolution this evening, it is important the Board understands the next steps and what administration can and cannot do to inform the community about the proposal. If approved, administration will file all required paperwork and coordinate with both DuPage and Will Counties to place the referendum question on the ballot for district voters. We will continue to inform the community about the details of our proposal. This will include updates through our website, informational mailings, and informational presentations. This will include sharing the ballot language, outlining the key improvements included, and informing our community on the importance of voting and sharing information on the voting process. Administration will not use district resources, including compensated time, to advocate or campaign for the proposal. This is not permitted under state law. If the Board approves this resolution, District Council is prepared to share further information later in the evening. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions you might have on tonight's recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Fosdick.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. You mentioned this briefly, but if you could expand a little bit upon it. How, what are some of the potential impacts on student and teachers should the referendum resolution not be accepted?
So, as mentioned, we believe we need these funds to address critical safety and security and infrastructure upgrades to our buildings. Absent this funding, we do believe we would still have to make many of these improvements, and we would have to do it using operating funds. So, that would mean a potential of a reduction in educational programming and a potential reduction in staffing to ensure we have the funds available to make those needed improvements. As mentioned, we're already the lowest of our eight comparable districts, and so we would expect that gap to continue to grow if we do not move forward with this proposal.
Thank you. That's all for now. Thank you. Ms. Demming.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. If we can go to Slide 4, please. And I just wanted to basically take a look at, you indicated that right now we are at .37, where we currently stand with, as we're getting ready to pay down our current bond. And this proposal basically has us at parity, would have us at parity of exactly where we are right now. So, we're not actually asking for any rate increase, any tax increase. Can you just share a little bit more on this slide, please, just so that we're clear? Because that's what I understand, and I want to make sure that...
Sure. That is correct. As shown here, we, district taxpayers are currently paying .37 for every $100 of assessed valuation towards repaying previously issued bond and interest payments. These are the bonds that built our schools through much of the 90s and 2000s. The last bond that was issued built Mateo Valley High School, and that bond was issued in 2006. Those bonds end in 2026, and so we are looking to keep that tax rate current and consistent so we would not see an increase to taxpayers, we would not necessarily see a decrease before issuing new debt. We're looking to keep that rate stable, and again, keep it stable at .37. If we issue the recommended amount here this evening, which is $420 million, that .37 rate would give us enough to repay the bonds over about 20 years. That may change a little bit depending on the market when we issue the bonds. It's a pretty conservative estimate, so it may be a year or two sooner than that. But again, that rate would continue to pay the new bond principal and interest payments each year. I will mention that the .37 tax rate, that's about 7% to 8% of the total tax bill a district taxpayer pays. So, we're talking about 7% of the total amount that's paid to Indian Prairie taxpayer.
Thank you. On Slide 6, we've talked about evidence-based funding, you know, over, for quite some time, and the expense per pupil, and we show that our expense, what we spend, is much lower. We talk about our eight comparable districts, but can, you know, as I look at what is suggested from the state that we spend and what the average is, we're still below that. So, as I look at Slide 6, we're not, it's suggested, what is suggested by the state that we spend per student. Again, we're 16% low, lower than what is even suggested by the state. Can you share a little bit what that means overall for our district in areas that if we were able to have at least meet where the state suggested what that might?
Sure. So, that, as mentioned, that's a funding percentage that comes directly from the state of Illinois. So, that is an assessment that's done annually by the state for every district. It is unique for every district based on the characteristics of the district, whether that's size, whether that's if it's a high school district versus a unit district, the demographics of that district, low-income percentage, and everything that goes along with that. So, by the state's own admission, they have, they're, the funding that's available to Indian Prairie, the total funding, both our property tax levy that goes to operations and the state funding, is not sufficient to provide an adequate education to District 204 students. As you can see, our comparable districts are all doing much better, and in some cases have significantly more resources to do that. So, what that means on a day-to-day basis for our students, it means a few things. First, it means we have high class sizes, class sizes that are well above the state average. It means we have one of the lowest administrator-to-pupil, one of the highest, excuse me, administrator-to-pupil ratios in the state, less administrators per student. So, we have less of that support, both sort of in our buildings, but also in our central office or district-wide staff as well. And then, really, it also means we've made some difficult decisions regarding how we maintain our buildings over the past 10 or 15 years. And we've made some conscious decisions to limit the amount of money we dedicate towards facilities annually to ensure we can invest as much funds as possible in the classroom. And we are now at a point where we see some of the challenges and needs really arise to the point where they need to be addressed, where we cannot continue to defer maintenance any longer. And that's what we've spent the past several months, really going back to the start of our master facility plan in 2023, trying to address, and all that work has culminated in tonight's recommendation.
Thank you. And the last question I have points to the areas of focus that you've outlined in Page, I'm sorry, Slide 7. Number one, safety and security, and that is obviously crucial. Administration, board, teachers, parents, providing the safety for our buildings is critical. And so, the first priority here, safety and security, and you've outlined some of the areas that are critical for us to do in order to enhance that safety and security in our schools. Can you share a little bit about what the length of time that you might expect that it would take for us to complete the safety and security areas and issues in our buildings?
Sure. As I think we mentioned several times, the safety and security work is the highest priority in this plan. So, if a referendum is successful, we would start the work in summer of 2025 and believe we would substantially complete safety and security-specific work through the summer of 2026. Some of the key areas that are outlined in that safety and security area are up above. I think the most significant work is related to our main office and our entrance areas, so creating a secure vestibule area where we can encourage and welcome visitors into our school, while also making sure that they're properly registered, that they have an appropriate reason to be in our schools, and that they're authorized to be in our schools. But I want to say, you know, when we talk about safety and security, we do approach it from a very holistic lens. So, I, you know, obviously, there are terrible things that happen in, that have happened in this country and schools, and we definitely, you know, lose sleep at night preparing for those situations or trying to make sure they never happen in our buildings. But we also think of safety and security along the lines of severe weather, fire, medical emergencies, just day-to-day student safety. You know, I make the joke, we call 911 from our buildings almost every day, and I know because I get an alert every time we call it. And it's, most of the times, it's a concussion in gym class, or a teacher fell off a ladder trying to reach something on the top of the bookshelf. But we want to make sure our buildings, you know, function and keep people safe on a day-to-day basis, too. So, that's, you know, ensuring that our doors are replaced and function properly, again, if we ever needed to egress quickly or lock them as well. It ensures our window areas are secure, improving visibility through improved landscaping, adding cameras, intercoms, more of an access control. adding cameras, intercoms, more of an access control to our locks. Again, just replacing, you know, outdated carpets so there's less trip hazards or improving our gym services. These are all things that play into safety and security as well. And so, a lot of those are included in this priority and will continue to be a focus.
Thank you. You, that was my last question, but you know, you touched on so many infrastructure areas. And we've talked time and time again about the necessity of us not, as we say, kicking the can down the road, but how imperative it is for us to ensure that some of those building maintenance, internal maintenance areas are really taken care of because those aren't desires, they're needs, and they're going to have to be taken care of one way or the other. And certainly, doing all that we can not to impact what our students are experiencing in the classroom on a day-to-day basis by us ensuring that we set the stage for us to provide those necessities without impacting our classroom learning environment is so critical. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Carrubus could not be here tonight, but he did provide a statement that I would like to read to give his part of the discussion here. So, he starts out with saying, "I support the referendum resolution. Number one, democracy. The school board should let the voters have an opportunity to make public policy. As a representative body, the school board makes board policy. The school board does not have the ability to issue $420 million in bonds without approval of the citizens of this district. Democracy lets the voters decide." Number two, perspective on security. In 2012, shortly before he joined the school board, 20 students and six staff were killed at Sandy Hook Elementary School. A similar tragedy in our community is one of my greatest fears. Since that time, there have been many security enhancements in our schools, as anyone who has tried to enter the buildings will notice. However, more is, needs to be done. The referendum directs funds for constructing security improvements, including installing secure entryways, access controls, and intrusion detection. The school board can make these major upgrades if the voters approve. Number three, perspective on elementary air conditioning. This is a favorite topic of Justin's. The district built most of its elementary schools without air conditioning. As a student, Justin attended one of those schools. As a parent, his children attended one of those schools. Eventually, there were newer elementary schools that had air conditioning. There were insufficient funds to retrofit all of those schools with air conditioning, even with the great need for doing so. The district was canceling school days because of heat. Without asking voters for authority to issue bonds, the school board found a fiscally responsible solution by adding a duck list system while maintaining a balanced budget. Much like elementary air conditioning, there are many needed projects for which there are insufficient funds. This referendum directs funds for, quote, "replacing roofing, mechanical, plumbing, and HVAC systems." The school board can make those major upgrades if the voters approve. Number four, perspective on borrowing from the buildings. In order to balance the budget of the district and keep resources directed to the classrooms, the school board has deferred much-needed maintenance on buildings. As one simple example, the 1993 carpet at Patterson Elementary School was replaced last year. 30-year-old carpeting is well past its useful life. Now, add up all of the much-needed projects across the school district. That number is larger than the annual budget. That number will not be reduced by efficiencies in any significant way. That number only increases with inflation. The referendum directs funds to, quote, "alter, repair, and equip existing school buildings." The school board can make these major upgrades if the voters approve. I'm a, he is a 50-year resident of the district, a graduate, a parent of a student, a parent of graduates, a taxpayer. I've lived through every referendum in the district. He has lived through every referendum, and he supports this referendum resolution. All right. We'll move to Ms. Gents.
I first want to thank you, Matt, for all the work you and all the administration has done to get this proposal put together. I have a two-part question, really, staying on slide seven. Could we ask for less money in the referendum? And if we did, what would that mean for the ability to take care of all of these priorities, basically, that we have here?
So, as we've discussed, the proposed referendum covers the highest priority needs in our master facility plan. Many items, while important, are not included in this funding proposal. So, this proposal really doesn't get us all the way here. As mentioned, that learning environment priority is somewhat limited as part of this funding proposal. So, we do believe a lower amount would not be sufficient to address our critical infrastructure and safety needs. We believe it would jeopardize the ability to provide safe and appropriate learning environments for our students in the future. And I will point out, as mentioned, we did some significant community outreach this spring to really get a feel for where our community stood on this proposal. And we believe this proposal is one that's the best aligned with what we heard from our community.
Okay. Thank you. Those are honestly my only questions right now. Thank you very much. Ms. Jane.
Okay. So, I have a few questions and then just want to end with some comments. If you could go to slide number six. Looking at this side, Mr. Shipley, I know we've talked about this, and I'm just kind of re-asking this question for our viewers who might be tuning in today. From your understanding, evidence-based funding formula is not likely to change in our favor anytime soon, based on your understanding?
That's correct.
And we have been managing our budget with this formula for some time now, since it was newly...
That's correct. The evidence-based funding, the adequacy percentages you see here, that funding formula started about 2017. So, we do have several years of history with it to kind of base that conclusion.
Yeah. And the last meeting, we kept, I use the word, we are lean and we're still working as a high-achieving district despite this. But as your presentation shows, this is not a sustainable model, and there is a price to be paid, which our buildings have paid for that price over, for the last few years, with deferred maintenance. Have you looked at other, and I'm, so I'm asking this question, having asked these questions, my next question is, have you looked at ways to save money? What efficiencies have you put in place or are putting in place?
Sure. Yeah, I think the district has a strong culture of budgetary responsibility. And I think, starting at the board level, starting at the top, we take our responsibility to taxpayers very seriously. So, I'll just cover a couple longstanding practices. I think I already mentioned our administrator to student ratio being one of the highest in the state. Also mentioned our staffing ratios, our class sizes being higher. You know, I'll point out, we do a pretty thorough annual review of our staffing plan. As Dr. Tally mentioned, his comments to the point, we're still moving people around, you know, up to that first day of school. So, we've made a commitment to ensure that the people we have are filling the highest priority roles in the district each year. With that said, I mean, there's, it's almost built into the culture a little bit, looking for cost efficiencies and areas to save money. So, it's hard to point out specific issues. I think all our administrators are really trained well at being able to squeeze a vendor for a couple thousand dollars here or there. So, it's something we can almost do naturally now. But, you know, recent work we've done, we in-sourced all printing services. So, we're now running substantially all our printing services through our high schools, saved several hundred thousand dollars doing that. We converted to a new HR finance system this July, which we expect to save about $100,000 annually. And then, you know, we did make some difficult decisions this year and reduce several support positions for this upcoming school year. So, again, speaking to that annual review that occurs each year with our budget and with our staffing. And again, it is something we take very seriously and will continue to do so. You know, I will point out that this funding proposal that we're looking at this evening is focused on capital funding. So, regardless of whether the board approves the referendum or not, or the voters ultimately support it, our operating expense per pupil will stay the lowest of our districts and continue to be below the state average.
And you mentioned our class sizes being high. And I know during many of our presentations this past summer, we talked about wanting to reduce that class size. Does this proposal, per se, impact that?
It will not impact it directly, but we do believe there's some indirect benefits to our operating budget. You know, we, some of the potential sources of savings as we invest in the capital work would be in the area of energy efficiency, whether that's converting to LED lighting or just those new doors and windows that we mentioned earlier, kind of keeping the heat in in the winter and the air conditioning in in the summer. It could also include just reducing our repairs and maintenance costs with critical systems. Last year, we spent over $2 million just on repairs and maintenance of current systems. And that number's increased pretty steadily over the last four or five years. So, even a 50% or even a 30% reduction in that number would provide significant savings that could go towards operations. And then finally, as mentioned, one of the priorities of this proposal was some of the inefficiencies from a programming standpoint. And so, this would allow us to save some operating dollars as well on the programming side.
Well, thank you, Mr. Shipley. I know you and many others in administration and staff have, and the community, have worked so hard to get it to this point, to make this presentation and proposal. As financial stewards, this work has been necessary, thoughtful, meticulous. And the fact that community input was provided throughout, I think, says a lot about our district and our process and why we are, we work so, we work on a lean budget and still maintain these standards. I was talking to a community member the other day about this, and they asked, "Well, how come right now? Why are we talking about this right now?" And I said, "Well, if you paid attention, the last three years, we've been actually kind of trying to make sense of the needs in our district." We did our redistricting, trying to make more optimal use of our buildings and more efficient use of our transportation routes. Dr. Tally initiated the strategic plan, right? We had our equity plan. We implemented to make sure that our work and our programming align with our district goals and objectives. And then we have this master facility plan, which hasn't been done in a long time, to really get into detail with data to understand the needs of our buildings. And we know that our buildings needed a lot because we had deferred maintenance. All of this was done so that we can move forward in a meaningful way as financial stewards, ensuring that whatever we are asking from the community is being asked based on data, right? And I really respect that about this board and the administration that we went through all of this. It's just not possible, it's not feasible to meet and to sustain our buildings and our programming under the current financial model. Anybody who's had to work with a budget knows that stretching the dollar, if someone were to give you $84 to try to meet your needs when in actuality you needed $100 or more a week, you might be able to pull that off for a week or two, maybe a few months. But to do that for years, obviously, there's a price to pay, and our buildings have paid the price. So, I appreciate, I really do appreciate what has been done to get us to this point. And should this board approve it, I really hope that our community also goes out and casts a vote in favor of this bond come November. Thank you.
Mr. Rising. Oh, wait. Do we need to get a microphone closer? Wait, one second. Wait, one second. Okay, try, try now, Mr. Rising. Better, yeah, better. Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to first start off with some thanks as well. You know, this, kind of the beginning work of this, you know, little did we know at the time when we were looking at facilities, you know, and then the 40 community presentations we've had, we've heard from hundreds of parents across the district. And I'd just like to thank those parents that were at all of those facility meetings, all of the, you know, community meetings that we talked about, the possible funding proposal, and really administration for kind of following the voices that we heard from our community. And I also wanted to thank the speakers tonight that spoke in favor of the referendum. You know, having these interesting perspectives, having been on this board now for 13 years, and, you know, I know many of us, you know, on the board and some probably in the audience who remembers the referendum back in 2005, 2006 to fund Mateo Valley, that was overwhelmingly supported by our community. Shortly thereafter, we hit a hard economic crisis in 2008 that lasted through 2012, where the district attempted to make over $80 million worth of efficiency cuts that, you know, hurt pretty deeply, that in no fault of our own. Because for 10 years leading up to that, we were being underfunded by the state. And what I mean by underfunded by the state is that the state wasn't even paying us what they said they would pay in education funding. And it was rough, and that took a hit on us, making sure we were to do the best job to educate our students. And sometimes that was not putting money into the facilities to make sure that money was in the classroom, to make sure we were seeing good teachers, to make sure that students had the resources that they need. And now, if you could just go to slide three, I just wanted to reiterate again that the referendum language is very specific that we must pass this $420 million towards those things listed in this referendum. Is that correct?
That is correct. As mentioned, this is, these funds can be exclusively used for district facilities. And the priority areas issued here will have to be addressed with the funds.
Okay. And then if you go to slide six. I guess to the best of your knowledge, Matt, you know, in the times since we took out our last bond in 2005, 2006, we have never went into debt, even though we were significantly underfunded compared to our comparable district. Is that a true statement to the best of your ability?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. We never built up our fund balances and the community doesn't know anything about fund balances. You know, sometimes when you have an overage of what you left to the community, any district will put that in our fund balances. And we've always maintained the reason among the fund balances to not take advantage of our taxpayers. Is that a fair statement?
Our current fund balance is at about 37% or 38% of total revenues. I think that's in line with our fund balance policy. And I think we've covered pretty much annually during the budget process. We need a significant portion of that fund balance to, just as working cash and to maintain liquidity throughout the year.
And then the last 10 years, even though we have received a lot of money to fund our district, we've made it a priority and have even lowered our property tax rate. Is that a fair statement?
Our property tax rate right now is the low... Our property tax rate right now is the lowest it's been since, kind of since the time you mentioned, since, since the financial crisis and recession of, of, you know, 2010, 2011. So our tax rate is the lowest it's been in about, in over 10 years. That's correct.
And then I just want to have to just briefly, because in other districts that I've seen that need facility updates, need to make building improvements, need to do something, you know, even operationally, which is in the operations, you know, facilities, you know, but we have a unique opportunity that I can't remember, you know, maybe one or two other instances than all the funding proposals I've ever seen schools do. And I just wanted, as you talked about, how it's such a unique opportunity where as this is, even though it's $420 million, that looks like a big number, that this is truly a no tax increase. And I just want, would you just address that because it's a very unique funding proposal though? And I want to make sure the community understands that.
Sure. So I did, I did put up slide four again, which again, reiterate. This is a sort of once in a generation type opportunity with the current debt maturing and being paid in full, being a district that has fully paid off the commitment to build all our facilities. Again, to build facilities that, that supported the extreme growth of this community in the, in the 90s and early 2000s. And this is sort of the, the once in a, in a generation opportunity to, to reinvest in those facilities and do so without increasing the tax rate.
And then just lastly, I don't ever recall, I was trying to, I even told the previous board members that I knew and the superintendents, administrators, this is the first time that I can remember our district doing a referendum where it's truly benefiting every student in every building across the district. I, I mean, I think that's a fair take, but don't you? I mean, this is truly benefiting all our students in our whole district.
We, we agree this proposal will improve facilities that serve every single student in the district.
And then, you know, I just wanted to kind of make a brief statement too, you know, this is, this is difficult, you know, but it's not because the way that I kind of look at this and Mr. Razak said this earlier in his comment, that he made to the board is that we've historically been a destination, destination district. We've been physically responsible. We've always invested in our students. The way I look at this, you know, that we have an opportunity here, as Mr. Shipley mentioned, that, you know, we have an opportunity to fund our facility needs at a no tax increase. We've continued to lower our tax rate. We haven't built up our fund balances. We haven't gone into debt. We've continued to raise our academic performance. We continue to be a destination district and I just want to throw in there, we are the 41st ranked district in the country, 41 out of 12,000 school districts. So we keep doing things right. And the way I look at this funding balance is benefiting every student. This referendum is physically responsible and it's really an investment in our schools and the future of our district. And I hope the community sees that it is that investment at a no tax increase that will help our students for years and years to come. So thank you again for all the work you did.
Yep. Thank you, Mark, and stay safe in Florida. Hope you, hope you get back.
Yeah, I'm trying to get that.
All right. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So a lot of work went into getting community input through various forums. I mean, even the facilities work took a lot of effort talking to the community. So we, I agree with Ms. Jane and others that mentioned the importance of having that input to this ultimate question being asked of us. During those discussions though, there was a segment of our community that's very interested in class sizes and counseling staff. And at different points in our work exploring this referendum, we actually thought about different models that would possibly ask for a continuous flow of money or a larger amount of money. And we, understanding the dynamics in our community and what, what they would accept or seem to accept as far as their tax rates, came up with this proposal. But what do you say to those people who maybe wanted that as a top priority? Sorry.
Yeah, I think we've been, I think we've taken our responsibility to listen to all community members very seriously. And while we listened to the community members, it certainly advocated for more and advocated for, for a potential operating rate referendum. I think in totality, I think this, this proposal most matches what we heard from our community. As mentioned earlier, I, it is, it is our hope that by at least securing funds for our, for our highest priority building needs and for the safety and security needs and for building infrastructure, that will allow us to, to invest operating funds in those high priority operating needs you just mentioned. So to the extent this proposal does create some efficiencies that we talked about earlier, those would be our, our first priorities to address class sizes, specifically class sizes at grades three through five, as well as to look at counselors and other, other mental health supports.
So also, Ms. Dumming asked you about the timeline. And you talked about safety and security and the other priority items that are on our list, like building maintenance or some of the upgrades to some of our schools that have significant structural changes that are being proposed. Would those also be able to work, be worked on in the same time period? Or would you do safety and security first and then?
Yeah, we, we're, we're in a good position and we've worked, again, through the master facility plan. We worked with engineers, architects, and also brought in construction management professionals to really identify and think through, through the process. So at this time, we, we believe all facilities will be able to serve students and be operational during construction periods. So while we would prioritize getting as much work as done during the summer as possible, we still believe we'll be able to move forward with, with some work during, during the school year. So specific to the four buildings that are in, in need of most comprehensive work, that being Wabonzi, Hill and Gregory Middle Schools, as well as Niqua Valley High School. We would likely start some of those projects or start working in at least two or three of those buildings by the summer of 2026. I would expect work at those buildings would be about a two or three year phase. We have some, again, some drafts of some phasing ideas or concepts right now that if we do move forward with this proposal, we will continue to work on and get to a point where we can share with the board and the community. But our, our intention would be to address those four facilities within the first five years of, of the plan. And as mentioned, we have eight years to spend the money. So that is a significant amount of work going on at several facilities in the district for, for hopefully the next several years.
Also, I know we went back to this slide several times, but I want to go back one more time, slide six. It's a kind of our favorite slide. But I, I want to give a very simple explanation to the community because I suspect there'll be more people maybe watching this than some of our other board meetings. And some people might look at this and say, well, how did we get to 84% versus other districts that are at like 121? Is it bad management of money or, you know, I know you kind of talked about it at a very high level or whatever, but it's basically because of the property values that we have in our district and the businesses. Is that right?
That's correct. So the state of Illinois is one of the most reliant states on property taxes for school district funding. So as a result, there's a wide variety of funding, whether on a per pupil basis or just total funding per student or total funding available to districts throughout the state. And so for Indian Prairie's story, I think speaks a lot to that limited commercial and industrial tax base, again, specifically compared to some of our neighborhood, neighbors. Board member Rising mentioned sort of the Great Recession earlier and that period. That saw a significant decline in maybe our main retail area, which is the Fox Valley Mall and that Route 59 corridor. And that's an area that, as, as the board knows, there's some exciting redevelopment projects going on now or, or being considered. But the value of that property has, has lagged, maybe other commercial areas. And so we've, we've really become reliant on our, on our property tax base and that, that's slowly shifted to being residential taxpayers. As Board Member Carubus mentioned in his, or kind of reiterated in his comments, school districts cannot levy above the Consumer Price Index for any purpose without voter approval. And so we've been living within that, that legislation. That's, that's the PTAL law we talk a lot about when we adopt the property tax levy each year. We've not asked the community for additional operating funds or additional capital funds in 18 years. And so as a result, that, that's where we are, again, receiving less, less per pupil than, than our comparable districts. And I'll point out when we compare to the state average and are still below the state average, you know, we have seen with evidence-based funding that that has funded some maybe higher need districts, districts that, that have a low income percentage, for example, significantly higher than ours. But we haven't seen that money address districts in our financial situation. So it's kind of raised the floor on funding in the state. But it's not necessarily raised the median or mean funding in the state. And then you have districts that have significant property wealth that they continue to raise the ceiling. So it does feel like we're kind of stuck in the middle as a district.
So, yeah, the state labels districts as tier four to tier one, with tier four being the best funded and have the most resources available for their property taxes in their district and tier of one being the worst, right? The lowest.
That, that's correct.
And we are a tier two district, so.
That's correct. And so that, that kind of concept earlier, I'd say evidence-based funding has made an impact for those tier one districts. The tier threes and fours have for a long time had significant property wealth and have really not relied on that state funding. And that kind of falls on the burden of, of a district like Indian Prairie to live within their means from a, from a property tax base that's maybe not as strong as some others, but not have access to that, that additional state money.
And, and we have lived within our means, as you pointed out, with meeting our budget, just always keeping within what we can levy and not asking for extra money, not looking for extra requests from our community. 2006 was the last referendum, right?
That's correct. Yes.
So we have had to make tough choices. I mean, we made a difficult choice on deferring some maintenance to move money over to put some more teachers in kindergarten through second grade classrooms before. So we have learned how to carefully manage the resources that we have and are thankfully, and continue to be a high rated district. So I'm going to ask if anybody has any other questions or comments. I just have one other thing to say. Any other? So $420 million sounds like an awfully large number, but we are the fourth largest district in the state with 34 schools and 26,000 plus students. We have over $3.5 billion in assets that are owned by our community. It's increasing security, protecting our $3.5 billion in assets and modernizing our aging buildings will allow us to continue to be a destination district where people and businesses want to move to. We are a top rated school district, as Mr. Rising pointed out, 41st in the United States out of over 12,000 districts. We create successful students and love to hear the one that was speaking tonight. We attract the bus staff and we also have a record of growing our property values and ask people about their home values and that's all due to having a strong school district. The referendum is critical to supporting our community and our continued success. So I'm very supportive of this. So with that, we will, I'll ask Rita Calvero on the show.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Demme.
Aye.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Fazek.
Yes.
And Ms. Skins.
Yes.
The motion passes. That was a lot of work. All right. So now we'll have...
So I've asked Don Hinkle, who is, serves as our counsel, to come to talk tonight about, now that you have passed this, what does this mean for you as a board? What does it mean for us as employees and our ability to move this forward? So, Ms. Hinkle.
Good evening. So I thought I would give you an overview of the laws that apply in this area and just kind of summarize some best practices and then I'm happy to take any questions that you have. So there are essentially three laws that come into play. And the first is the election interference section of the election code. And that essentially says that public funds cannot be used to advocate for or against a referendum. Keep in mind though, that that law also specifically says that public entities are permitted to use public funds to disseminate factual information about a referendum. So you have that important distinction there between factual information, which is permitted, and advocating for or against, which is not permitted, when you're specifically talking about the use of public funds. And that law applies to everyone. So no district employee and no board member can use district funds to advocate for or against the referendum. The second law is the Local Government Employee Political Rights Act. And that law says that no school district may inhibit or prohibit any employee from exercising the employee's right to engage in political activities. So the district cannot interfere with an employee's right to conduct those political activities to the extent that the activities are otherwise permitted by law. And I add that last caveat because the law also says that school district employees cannot engage in political activities while at work or on duty. So there's that important restrictions when it comes to employees. The third law is the State Officials and Employees Ethics Act. That law says that school districts have to have a policy governing prohibited political activities. Your district does have that policy. It is policy 2105 and it is the ethics policy. Under the statute and the policy, district employees are prohibited from performing any political activity during compensated time. So the same sort of idea as the last statute that I just talked about. The policy does address compensated time because for some employees, that may not be easy to determine when they're on compensated time. For hourly employees, it's a little easier. For salaried employees, it's not as easy. So the policy says on that issue, with respect to an employee whose hours are not fixed, compensated time includes any period of time when the employee is on premises, under the control of the district, and any other time when the employee is executing his or her official duties regardless of location. So there's that sort of parameter, parameter in the policy about what constitutes compensated time. And then the policy also does include a definition of political activities. It's a list of 15 items that it does include campaigning for or against a referendum. So again, employees are prohibited from engaging in those type of campaign activities during compensated time. That specific restriction does not apply to board members because you are not employees of the district and you are not compensated for your time or for your work as board members. There are, however, restrictions under the policy and the statute that do apply to board members. So under those, again, the statute and the policy... Um, so under those, uh, again, the statute and the policy, board members and employees cannot use any district property or resources in connection with any polit- political activity. And so that's consistent with, but broader than that first statute that I talked about, which specifically focused on the use of uh, district funds. So this says, again, you cannot use district property or resources in connect- in connection with those prohibited political activities. And then board member and and board members and employees are also prohibited from requiring anyone else to perform any political activities. So a board member or a district employee cannot require another board member or another district employee uh, to campaign for or against the referendum as part of their duties or as part of their compensated time off, um, or as any kind of condition of employment. And then lastly, under the statute and the policy, board members and employees also cannot receive any additional compensation in exchange for participating in any kind of political activity. Um, so it has to be completely voluntary, it can't be compensated. Um, so overall, there are some uh, parameters and best practices for board members. Uh, again, under the applicable law and the policy, board members cannot use district funds or district reef- resources to advocate for or against the referendum. So given this, when you're on district property or when you're using district equipment like a computer, um, or other resources like your district email address, um, or during board meetings, uh, no advocacy can occur, so there can't be an urge to vote either yes or no. During those times, instead, uh, there should be a factual approach, so you can, again, disseminate factual information about the referendum, but stay away from advocacy during those times. At other times, so when you're not on district property, uh, not using any district resources and not otherwise acting in an official role as a board member, you can indiv- you can individually engage in referendum related activities. So within those parameters, board members can have a yard sign uh, in the lawn at your home. You can uh, wear vote yes buttons or vote no buttons. Uh, you can disseminate literature, you can go to a meeting of a citizens referendum committee, or you can donate your own personal funds to a citizens referendum committee if you'd like. So again, all in your personal capacity. Um, district employees also can engage in those same activities as well, as long as they do so away from district property, during non-compensated time, while they're otherwise not at work or on duty, and again, not using any district resources. So, I know there's, there are probably some questions, which I'm happy to answer.
Okay. I will let Mr. Rising start.
Uh, no, I'm clear, I just wanted to hear Dawn say that on my private time, I could do that, I totally understand, private funds, compensation, compensation, property resources, board meetings, school grounds, all that stuff, but I just wanted to verify that in my private time, I could either speak positively or negatively about um, that referendum. Um, I just, I wanted to understand that because I do not want to be a violation of what the statute requires, they allow that because people ultimately inevitably are gonna ask us as individuals. Um, and if they ask us as board members, I think we also need to make that very clear that we are enough for representing the board, we are speaking as an individual, um, and and giving them our opinions, whatever that may be. So, um, thank you for clarifying that, that I don't really have any question.
Ms. Fosdick.
I feel pretty clear, but I just want to clarify, so I can't wear a vote yes T-shirt to a board meeting, correct?
Correct, you cannot.
But at home, I could wear it.
That's absolutely right.
Or to Costco, for example.
Right, yes.
I could wear it everywhere else, I just wanted to clarify, otherwise I think I'm, you've covered um, all of the bases we can think of currently, but I'm sure in the future, if we have additional questions, we can reach out through President Donahue.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Gents. I do not actually have any questions, very happy, though, to know we can wear vote yes shirts around at the house and everything. I think that was our biggest question for most of us, which is the personal time and it being able to post just as a person, not as a board member, just so I think you did an amazing job covering everything, thank you, Dawn.
Ms. Demme.
Um, very clear on ours, you love, thank you so much, um, because um, very, very, very specific. Can you just, though, um, one more time, from an employee standpoint, acting as an individual employee, can you share what that status looks like?
Sure, so an employee um, has the right to and can engage in uh, referendum-related activities either for or against the referendum, as long as the employee is not on compensated time, uh, not on duty, and not using any district resources.
Perfect, thank you.
May I just add something? It just goes directly to your, you talked about salaried employees and how that can be difficult.
Yes.
And we think about our teachers, for example, they are salaried, but they have a start and a stop time.
Yes.
So that gets, gives them the ability after, before their start time, if you will, or after their stop time, they can do, if they want, uh, uh, actions about the referendum, correct?
That's right, um, we do caution employees and board members both to be careful about what you're doing on district grounds because that could be seen as using district resources. So away from district grounds, absolutely, uh, teachers can get engage in, again, activities for or against the referendum, um, before work hours or after work hours.
Certainly. And then just one other question, can you guide us on the social media realm, please? Uh, just so that we're very clear on that, from a, from an employee standpoint as well as a board member.
We all know what a morass social media can be. Um, any district-sponsored social media should disseminate factual information only. Um, any personal social media should make it clear that you or an employee are speaking in their personal capacity and not in your official capacity in your case as a board member.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jane. I I think um, you have clearly stated what we can and can't do. I, one area that um, I've just been thinking about is our discussion today in our official capacity as board members, we've kind of shared our views, our vote. How how does that, how does that play into all of this? I mean, and then, I mean, we could be speaking as a private citizen, but we could refer them to today's video or meeting um, in our official capacity, because it's.
Well, part of your role as a board member is to take action on the ballot question and so, or on the resolution to add the ballot question, and so it's absolutely fine to express your support for putting the ballot question on the ballot.
Okay.
And that's what you've done here tonight.
Okay.
Okay, what about like um, PTA um, people, would, what, is there any guidance around PTA presidents or, you know, is it, is everything the same as what you said, like they can state facts, but they can't take an op- opinion?
Uh, well, the PTA is not subject to the same requirements that apply to board members and employees, except to the extent that, you know, a PTA member is also an employee or a board member. Um, so PTAs uh, don't have to worry about generally the same sorts of parameters. They cannot use district resources, though, or district funds to advocate for or against the referendum. So you can't have um, a PTA member coming into a building and using a copier or something like that. Um, so all their activities have to be without using re- district resources or funds.
So, the PTAs are using our buildings for PTA meetings and they do not pay rent on the room. If they have a meeting and they speak and the, telling people to vote yes, are they, they're using resources, are they not?
Yes.
That's what I thought, I just want to make sure, clarify that.
You could permit a a group to use your building, provided that they rent the building like any other group does, and that would have to be on an even-handed basis, so um, regardless of the uh, viewpoint of the speech, you would allow that building use.
But they, I mean, a PTA president, though, at, in their house, could have a yard sign.
Absolutely.
And the PTA president could put out information, factual information about the details of the referendum.
Absolutely.
Okay, and the same with, so with teachers during, and I I don't think, I don't know if this will happen or what, but during the class day, so it's not after hours, can they also just have information on the referendum that they have in their classroom or or no?
Um, they could, I would be very careful about um, making sure that you're aware of what kind of information is there and that it's factual only.
Okay. I I'm just picturing maybe some of the high school, you know, social studies, um, people might want to have some of that, you know, available because it's a big issue for us, so.
Yes.
Could PTAs discuss uh, their referendum at a Zoom meeting?
As long as they're not using district resources for the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
And and to back, I think uh, Lori was talking about the PTA president, as long as the PTA president is not a district employee or a board member, the PTA president can wear a vote ye- yes button or a vote no button, um, in whatever setting, wherever the president would like to go.
Even in in the building?
Yes.
So when they have their meeting, they could write, wear a vote yes shirt?
No, oh, uh, if they're, if they're using your building as a resource for their meetings, that changes things, because then they're using district resources. But if you have the PTA president coming to pick up their child, that's different.
Oh, okay, okay.
And if they were renting the building, if they, if they were renting the building, though, that they, they could wear it if they were in favor or if someone had a different viewpoint, they could wear it if they were renting the building.
Right, if if you're renting the building on the same basis that you do to other groups.
Yeah, so you couldn't, you couldn't offer it for like a penny or a sudden loan, but then we'd have to offer it for a penny to everybody.
Right.
You know, I'm not gonna tell a PTA person what they should, should, if you have the rule about for a PTA person, should. Just if you're on school grounds or in a meeting, you don't speak about it, if you want to speak about it in a personal capacity, um, away from the school building and on your private email or your private social media.